This call is meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Cancelo Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Frenchkow.
Okay, start the meeting off today. First, the thing I want to do is congratulate Auditor Yoder. She was recognized this morning by her peers and the Planning Commission as the recipient of the Something Good Initiative for all her dedicated work with the county, not only in her capacity as auditor, but the work she does outside of her official capacity throughout the community, helping the Commissioner's office, helping the Treasurer's office, and pretty much anybody that requests any type of assistance, Martha's right there. She's the first one to work every day, usually the last one to leave.
True.
And she's made a huge impact on our county in a very short amount of time that she's been here. So Martha, congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you, Martha.
And thank you to the Planning Commission for nominating her and unanimously voting that she's the recipient of the award. So that's pretty cool. Okay, we have some people that are here today. We have a short agenda. You guys, anyone pressed for time or they have to get somewhere? If not, then we'll go through our agenda quickly and then we'll get to our guests. We'll start out with the Spencer reading in a minute, approve the bills, transfer monies, number three.
All right, so number three transfers, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. On number three, the only one that we have is the Board of DD and it's $5 million. They're transferring to their capital fund to support upcoming projects. Number four, approving additional appropriations, and this is the veterans. They received a donation, they're using it for building repair and it just needs to be appropriated as an additional appropriation. Transfer of appropriations, number five. The first one is Board of Elections and it's for additional operations supplies needed. The next two are Board of Health, increase for renewal mailing, increase for gasoline. Domestic Relations Juvenile Court is an interpreter service. Emergency Management is an increase for office supplies. Highway is legal fees. The Planning Commission are the purchasing of a refrigerator and their notary license. And I'll let Bob do the other three.
Bob Meyerano, Sanitary Engineers. The first one is for electric bills for the remainder of the year for our mineral ridge water district. The second one is $5,000 to replace sewage pumps and repairs. And the final one, the $6,280, is to remove a negative balance.
Okay, number six, that was the creation of an IDAM fund. And that's Inadvertent Driver Interlock Alcohol Monitoring. We know it's Fund 67, used by Trumbull County Juvenile Court. And it is related to license reinstatement fees collected by the VMV, which are distributed to the court. Number seven, approve a comprehensive assistance program for employees. CAPE agreement between Trumbull County Commissioners and Compass. Family and Community Services effective September 1 through August 31. To appoint Trumbull County Human Resources Director as the program owner and liaison on behalf of Trumbull County. Alex, that's all you.
Good morning, Commissioners. So it is actually per our Personnel Policy, Section 3.7, Appendix C, that the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners have a CAPE program or EAP program as it's put right now in our Policies and Procedures Manual, but it's the same thing. This is a program for county employees who are having difficulty, right? We can actually refer them there. They can go and have any type of services pertaining to policy and procedure, employee family notification, general consultation, program evaluation survey. This is truly an outlet for employees of Trumbull County should they be going through something difficult. And there is a fee for service attached to the back. This is something that multiple entities under the county already have. Trumbull County John Family Services, that's how I knew to engage CAPE. They have a contract with them. Board of Developmental Disabilities has a contract with them, as does the Trumbull County Engineers Office. So what we're presenting is that this contract would cover already additionally under the Board of Commissioners who already doesn't have a contract. It's time to renew, it's time to re-up, and this is something that I have employees asking us for. So we need to get this on the docket.
Sure.
One additional item, obviously the Prosecutor's Office has reviewed the language, that's in your packet. But it is very important when you're dealing with sensitive matters such as this, that there is an HR as your owner and liaison. Those reports will come to myself, as somebody who's trained in medically sensitive data and information. That is why this program should be owned by Human Resources, and typically is anywhere else.
No problem, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, number eight, appoint Attorney Brent Rhodes and Associates of Cybert Road Lacking Swisher, Attorneys at Law, Powell, Ohio, pursuant to RC 30909 and 30514, as counsel for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, to provide legal research, advice, consulting, including all related litigation relative to workers' comp at the rate of $2.50 an hour, and authorize the HR director to sign the engagement letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
Again, Commissioners, so sent some detailed information to you guys yesterday. Typically, there's three hearings that you can have at a Bureau of Work and Comp case. We, at the HR Department, are our own representation on every single one of those levels. The DHO, the SHO, and then the Industrial Committee Review. What happens after the Industrial Committee Review if a case is continued to be disallowed by the Bureau? The employee in question then has the right to sue through the Common Pleas Court, to take it to Common Pleas. We are at that level with a current claim. I do not want to discuss that here. If you would like to, we can go into executive session. That's again medically sensitive information and personnel. But at the time that it gets to the Common Pleas level, our Prosecutor's Office, we obviously always check with them, but they continue to say that they don't, that's not their area of expertise. So what they do is they say you need to appoint outside counsel. I have provided you with all that information. And luckily, through enough of my own trainings that I go to on behalf of Bureau of Work and Comp, we were lucky enough to meet Brent K. Rhodes and Associates. They're $250 an hour. The engagement letter is nice, because what that does is, we only can utilize them on a case-by-case basis. There's no monthly retainer, there's no up-bump retainer. So basically, when HR says, "I have a case that we need you to help us," we can engage them at any time.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, number nine, approve the retirement of Ms. Kathy Mardo from a position of dispatcher within 911. She will retire September 14th after nine years of service. I'd like to wish her a fond farewell, many years of happiness, good health, and relaxation. And that's going to bring our numbers down one, but I understand there are two in training that are doing extremely well right now. Look like they're keepers.
Yep.
And we will continue to search for more and more. If we read the Strategic Plan.
The feasibility.
feasibility study that we received last week, it shows in there, I think our staffing load will be 17 or 18 now. It says we should be at 40. Now, of course, 40 is a big, long number to get to.
Sure.
But we need to get to at least 25. I mean, we need to really strive over the next year to get those numbers up to someone more of a manageable level to decrease all the overtime that we're getting. It's outrageous, the amount of overtime that's being approved in that department right now for lack of staffing. So there are job fairs coming up, there are, our director right now is at a conference. Hopefully, we can get some butts in these seats and give people a good job with a good career and a good future. They need to look at the Commissioner's website now and apply, because we're looking for good people. Number 10, authorize letter of support from the Board of Commissioners for the City Gerard's application to the All Ohio Future Fund with the Department of Development. A letter from the Board of Commissioners is required step for the application to the state. They're aiming to redevelop the former Ohio Leatherworks property in Leatherworks Trailhead, which will be an interface between trails and surrounding communities. The region lacks the development of vacant brownfield sites, making the work that City Gerard is leading ever more significant. So they're asking us for a letter for that. Is that what you guys are, you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just.
See the magazine.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Okay, Gina.
I was just here if you guys had any questions on the All Ohio Future Fund. It's a $750 million investment. We're currently going to be applying in the second round of application. The letter supports one of the last steps that we need. And like I said, it's for Leatherworks site to bring economic growth downtown Gerard. So yeah, if there's any questions or...
Does this go towards the cleanup of it, or does this go towards?
This is going, oh, do you want to?
At the Planning Commission, at the Planning Commission today, we learned that they're the last step of the remediation cleanup of Leatherworks. That they're the final hurdle, where they're basically ready to sign off on it. So I wouldn't imagine this is cleanup, this is something different.
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission. So this is not part of the cleanup, the cleanup came through the USCPA grant. The remediation is complete, the no further action paperwork was submitted as a draft. Got comments from the USCPA, comments from corporate resubmitted, so we're closing that grant. At this point, they're basically just waiting for the USCPA to finalize the approval of the no further action or NFA. With that in place, then you can go on to the development steps that Gina is working on behalf of the City of Gerard for, which includes the Gerard Leatherworks Trailhead that was submitted as the Appalachian Community Grant, one of our projects that was not funded, but will tie into our Great Ohio Lakes to River Greenway eventually. And I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know what else is in the application, so you go ahead.
And you kind of hit it all, but yeah, it's definitely for the planning of it. And there's different, there's four different parts of the site, so it's all going to be intertwined as one.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Happy to help. Okay, so, yes, we will. No problem with that letter, correct?
Oh, no.
Okay. Number 11, authorize Danny Malloy, President of Board, Trumbull County Commissioners, sign a notice to proceed letter for two M services for the replacement of four household treatment systems funded through 2023, 2024 HSTS Reserve Program for eligible homeowners, and duly recorded in the Journal.
Nick Coggins, Trumbull County Planning Commission. Commissioners, this is a notice to proceed for contracts that were already awarded for our home sewage treatment system, commonly referred to as septic systems. This is a program we apply for every year. This is going to use 23 and 24 funding to help low to moderate income households replace septic. So this is for four households. Item number 12 is for another company, ProScape, for three households. And 13 is for the company S&amp;P Septic and Escavating for another three households. So a total of 10 households, middle income qualified, contracts have already gone out. There's been time, it's just a notice to proceed.
Okay. 12, authorize Danny Malloy, President of Board, Trumbull County Commissioners, sign a notice to proceed letter for ProScape Septic and Landscape Contractors for the replacement of three household treatment systems, also funded by HSTS Reserve Program.
As I said, same thing, notice to proceed for, that first one was two M services. This is ProScape Septic and Landscape. And 13 will be S&amp;P Septic and Escavating.
For three more.
Correct, for three more, for a total of 10 between the three companies.
Fantastic. Okay, number 14, approve the personal action for the employment transfer. Ms. Elizabeth Jones from a position of operator pay range eight, to the position of TV inspector pay range six with Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers, effective Friday, September 20. It's due to an employee termination, and Ms. Jones holds her CDL with tanker endorsement. Is this something where she's going backwards to eventually go forward?
Commissioners, Bob Meyerano. So she currently works as a operator, which is a rotating shift schedule, weekends, holidays, midnights. And she no longer wants to work that shift, so she's trying to get back to a day-term job.
Yeah.
I mean, we had two internal applicants, she had more seniority and had done the job before, so she was awarded it.
Wish her the best of luck with that. Okay, 15, approve a modification of the purchase of service contract buying between Trumbull County Department of JFS and Garwin for October 1st to September 30th. Return of October 1st '23 to September 30th '24. Is that a year backdated, or is that?
The original contract was, the original contract was from October 1st, 2023 through September 30th of 2024. And we're just mending it to put an additional $10,000.
Gotcha.
Because Title 20 Service, we usually don't use a lot of that money for non-emergency transportation because it's restricted to certain applicants, but we've had an additional need that we didn't have before. So that, excuse me, John Gargano, JFS, I forgot to say that, I'm sorry. But we need an additional $10,000 to make it through the end of September.
Number 16, award the lowest responsive and responsible bid submitted by Carvo Companies for the TH185C Bushnell Campbell Road project, the amount of $324,875 paid by Trumbull County's ARPA funds. No County General Revenue Funds required, enter into contract with Carvo for said project. Includes resurfacing of Bushnell Campbell between SR 88 and 5 in Vernon Township. This is the, where the engineer kicked in to help Vernon Township and get it to qualify for ARPA? Dig it, Martha?
Oh.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Number 16.
Yes, yes.
So they're going to get started on that. Is that a lesser fund than what we appropriated, or is there going to be more funds to go with that?
We appropriated $100,000 and for this, because remember, we had the frozen money. And so we've only allowed for $100,000, the bizetta is worth.
No, 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 this is Vernon.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vernon.
Number 16, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that is lesser, yes, I believe so, yes, I apologize.
So there's money left maybe in the kitty that I haven't done.
Yes, but we'll see how that, right.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize for that.
Number 17, approve the Ohio Department of Transportation Prepared Professional Service Agreement with Bowman. Appraisal to provide right-of-way acquisition for the West Morgan Street Bridge Project, located in the City Warren, the amount of $1,800. 80% federal share for the services shall be direct paid through federal grant. Receive the rescape while 20% local share paid from County Engineer Fund. Okay. 18, incur with the engineer for right-of-way for custom cable construction. 19, special hauling permit for Jero Transportation. 20, special maintenance supplier fleet permit, McCoy Excavating and Holtz Trucking. And believe it or not, that concludes our agenda items for tomorrow. Anything else that we need to add on here? Alex, was there an executive session potentially tomorrow for workforce development?
No, I sent everything to the Commissioners, it's at your behalf to make your decision and let me know what you would like to do. It was all sent to you yesterday.
Okay, so is that something we're going to discuss in executive session, or is that something that for us to discuss when?
I mean, I would just propose that you look through everything that was sent to you. Everything was provided to you.
Okay.
Again, I just sent it yesterday, but I would look through everything, it's pretty clear. I just need to know from the Commissioners, at least the Board, during the Board, if you would like to go forth with my recommendation that was emailed to you, or if you would like to do interviews on your own, or whatever you would like to do. It's just that simple, he says it's that simple, but it's that simple, so. I've done all the work for you, so just let me know now what you would like to do.
I agree with your decision that you have there.
I think it's very evident.
And I would ask you to put it on the agenda for next week then.
That is all I needed to hear, thank you. And I did share with all three Commissioners, so again, I just was waiting for the Board of Commissioners to give me an accept, because I don't have that authority to make that decision myself.
Okay.
Unless one day you would like me to.
(laughing).
One day, just not today.
I, that was just a joke, but.
Um, okay. Other business, we just had the ribbon cutting for the Flying High Action Mobile Grocery Store. Awesome turnout from the community, I want to thank all the department heads and all the partners and everyone. Even Judge Blue Dorn walked over with a newly replaced knee with this cane, walked over from Family Court to be a part of it. So this was a great thing for the community, a great way for the community to come together to spotlight a big need that we have in the county, and that's the healthy, fresh food for all the citizens. And a lot of people in the county only have access to a Dollar General store, and they try to make a family dinner, breakfast, lunch, and dinner out of that. For them to have this access here with healthy, fresh foods on there and produce and everything, it's awesome. I want to commend Rose and Pastor Todd Johnson and everyone involved in this thing of, for making this thing possible, and all the partners that joined us up front today, it was pretty awesome.
Just to echo that, you know, we've done a lot of different projects with ARPA. We've done roads, bridges, sewer, broadband, but none of them really touch the heart like this project, because we know there are food insufficiencies out there, and we know there's food deserts. And this is a way that we can join with another entity, well, multiple entities, to first of all identify a problem and then use federal funds to be able to, you know, sort of try to stave this off and create a path forward for people that don't have access, as you said, Commissioner, to fresh and healthy foods, whether it be meat, produce, or anything like that. Like you said, Dollar Generals just don't cut it. And until a lot of these communities get grocery stores, because that's the ultimate goal, is to get grocery stores in these communities, this is something that can bridge that gap and be, you know, a resource to people in the City of Warren and throughout the county. They're not just limited to the City of Warren, they're going to be throughout the county. So it's something that we're very proud of, is one of the things that we all obviously agreed on, and I'm glad to see it come to fruition.
Excuse me, John Gargano, JFS. On that, I just wanted to let the Commissioners know, I had already been working to have the mobile meal next to the building at JFS. We first, we have our first mobile meal shopping tentatively October 11th, that's Friday, October 11th. And it should be between 10:00 and 2:00. Hopefully, it will work out, and then we're looking at potentially, if not monthly, every other month, having that mobile meal truck or van at the agency in that area. We're just not sure of the capacity of the crowd, and that's what we have to figure out. If there's a large number, you know, what do we do, and the parking and everything like that, if people are coming with their vehicles. But first one is tentatively sent October 11th.
Awesome, thank you, John.
And then Commissioners, Alex Stephen Johnson-Bush, sorry, I forgot to announce myself before. I was actually reading the news this morning, and I think it's just really interesting that today we launched the Action Mobile Meal for Trumbull County. We have cities, I believe it was the City of Gerard, who is actually looking to put a moratorium on Dollar Generals in the area. So I mean, it's very, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what I read this morning. So it is very prevalent of what we're seeing. You know, the prices are high for people when it's, you know, kind of a monopoly situation. So this is a very good time, and I was just pleasantly surprised by everything in the community outreach, and it's just a wonderful thing for Trumbull County, so thank you, for the people of Trumbull County, all people, not just underprivileged. I really wanted to reiterate that. It is not just for underprivileged, it is for anybody and everybody to shop that truck. I don't want to call it, it's a truck, but what do we call it? I don't know, okay, but, so thank you.
Thank you all. Yeah, proceeds made from that are going to be rolled right back into the Action Network, which is a nonprofit. So anyone that shops there is going to help the big cause, so. And they had, they had good stuff in there.
They did, it was beautiful.
They had some healthy-looking produce, and they even had ribs and oxtail and all kinds of unique things taken.
Yeah.
They had hamburgers fresh from a butcher shop. They partnered up with the local community too, some local farms and some local butcher shops. So the food is, a lot of it is Trumbull County-made and fresh, so that's another cool aspect of it. Okay, anything else from our Gerard friends? You guys are good? Gary?
Gary Newborough, Sanitary Engineer. Commissioners, the 2025 WPLF nominations are due September 18th. We're submitting four of them, I've completed those, and I'll need your signature on them after this meeting, Commissioner. The main one though is Pendleton Gilmer, that's where we're going for that $4 million of principal forgiveness, so.
Okay.
I'm just letting, making you aware that this is being sent in, and hopefully it'll score number one in the state, just like Meadowbrook did last year. That's what we're shooting for on that. On a separate matter, we received an email from Assistant Prosecutor Danzo regarding the Allen Land Group Water Bill, Chicken Farm up in Southington. And Attorney Danzo told us that I believe that sending a corrective bill to the customer and the enforcement of the corrective billing is the proper course of action. And I believe that it is acceptable and appropriate to offer time to repay, as you have already done. So I am basically informing you that Prosecutor's Office has determined that he does owe the money for the water that he used. And that, I just want your permission to move forward with this.
Is there any sort of payment plan that we can put him on?
Yeah, so we've already suggested that we'll let him pay it off over a year.
I think that's only reasonable on our part.
Yes.
Has their attorney approached our attorneys at all, or is it?
Well, he addressed that also. He said if the customer's attorney believes there is some other legal argument as to why this money is not owed, I would be glad to review it.
You know, I'd like to, clearly, he's been here a couple of times at our meetings.
Yes.
Clearly, there was a mistake on our part, which, part of the mistake, and we're able to figure out how much water was used. He was under billed by fault of us and by no fault of his own. I think he probably would pursue legal action against us, which is going to cost us. I'd still like to see, I know although we've offered a payment plan, I would like to see us go a step further to head off any type of illegal battle that's going to end up costing us time and resources. And I think, being that it was our mistake, we fixed the mistake, we found it, we fixed it. It wasn't the first time we had that mistake, so second time, shame on us. But I think we need to go a little more than just a payment plan. I think some form of a discount would be in order, just because of the time and effort and hassles that he has in regards to the troubles he's had. He's budgeted, he paid the bill, he's, he launched his next business plan for expansion, and now he's got to pay back money he wasn't expecting to pay back. There's no way he would have known, this was initially when the new process was set up, how much water he was going to use with the system, so. If it is what it is, I get that now where it is, and he's got to pay what it is now. But at the beginning stage where we had a mistake, we've got to absorb some fault, whether it be the product manufacturer that gave it to us, by the way we implemented it, or whatever the mistake was. I think it would be fair to come up with some type of settlement out of court that is agreeable to him. And I'd like to, another sit-down meeting with him to see if, here's where our bottom line is, here's what we're due, in effort for him to sign off on legal action that's going to tie up resources, should that happen.
The only concerns I have is whether or not that is legal, number one. If we can do that, I mean, you're talking about public utilities. And then number two, what sort of precedent does that set? If there's any other discrepancies, or there have been other discrepancies in the past, and people have paid the full amount, they're going to say, well, why is this person getting special treatment, and why didn't we?
Yes, Commissioner, that's the same concern I have.
And the same people are going to say, if the sanitary engineers screwed it up once to one company, why didn't they fix it before they screwed it up again to a second company? It's going to be that argument too.
All three of these compound meters were identical from a manufacturer. And these were the only three, the one at Southington, the one at the Chicken Farm, the one up at Midr. So, you know, those were three of them that came online at about the same time.
And two of them failed.
Yeah, and this billing software that was put on us.
They failed, but he used the water. It wasn't like you could say that there wasn't, the water wasn't used, it was used by.
You're right, there is no dispute as to how much water he used from us.
So the service was provided.
Right, yes, and there have been, if we were to go back years, there have been discrepancies on bill where we have underpilled and then had to come back and let the people know, hey, you owe us this much more. And I mean, that has gone on since probably the establishment of the Sanitary Engineers Office. And if we were to not charge the entire amount on this one, I don't know how that's going to help us with other people that we have that have paid up to this date.
Bob Meyerano, Sanitary Engineers. This error that occurred has happened in the past 10 years ago, eight years ago. It happened somewhat routinely, we're trying to catch those more often. But on a weekly basis, we get calls for someone left a hose running, and they want us to give them a discount on the water that somebody left it, it wasn't them, it was a contractor. We never cut deals.
Right, but that's their fault. This here was 100% our fault. He didn't leave a hose on, it wasn't the contractor and his property that did it. It wasn't the chickens that did it, it was our fault, we had machinery that didn't work, that didn't register correctly, and like I said, there's got to be a manufacturer somewhere involved in this somehow. If they gave us a piece of equipment that wasn't functioning properly, that needed adjusted to a certain way, that's got to kind of be on us somewhat, I'm just saying what's fair is fair. If it was me in that situation. If it was me in that situation.
This can, this can go back to, uh, what's the Munis software that was brought in by the board? You know?
I know where you're going.
Yeah.
Alex Stephen Jonesy-Bush, Human Resources Friends. What Gary is speaking to is, you know, at, within the county, it is not typical that, you know, we have a malfunction in Munis, or a pay code's not put in correctly, or something. Whenever an employee gets overpaid or underpaid, it is, we are by statute required to recoup that money and/or give that money. So, what, I, is that what, is that where you were going to get it?
Yeah, that's where we, we.
I don't think this is any different.
I think that's what I was going to say.
This is not transparent at all.
We, we had a, a situation like that.
I understand, I agree.
When I first came in from, um, I don't know if I said, Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor. When I came in from '22, so before I was in office, that, that audit, there was a finding on us.
Yeah, yeah.
And we had, and it wasn't a whole lot of money.
No, it was minimal, but we had to recoup it.
We had to recoup it. And so, we have to be really careful about, um,
Public dollars.
Public dollars and recouping this.
When you're talking about public utilities, public dollars, public anything, um, Commissioners, I just, I would defer to what the prosecutor's opinion is, and yeah, no, I, I would just be very cautious, because any, I, as an HR Director, I've learned one thing very quickly. Once you set a precedent, you set a precedent. And that is going to be something that you are going to have to live with thereafter. So, I am cautioning you to be very careful on how you view this, and heed by what a prosecutor's opinion is. What are, what is best for our county and li, and protecting us from liability.
And Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor. That principle, the idea of precedence, isn't just with public funds. When you operate in a private business, a, as I did for 29 years, if I treated somebody differently, or against my policy that I had written, I could be held liable for it.
Well, and, and then you're seen as choosing winners and losers. And that's not what we're here to do, you know?
Well, we're here to be fair too.
I, I, I see what you're saying.
Doesn't mean we can use our power.
He, he used the water, though. And, and, uh, Martha, you're a Trumbull County Auditor. A few weeks ago, when we talked about this, I made the illustration of my bank inadvertently put $5,000 in my account. Um, I was responsible to give back that $5,000. It was not mine. He had water. It was maybe not metered properly or accounted for properly. He had water that he used.
Commissioner, if you want to ask a, a, a further question of the prosecutor, I would be amenable to that, if you want to, you know, if you really want to dig into this further. I'm fine with that, so I guess we can go round and round on this all day, but, um.
I'm just, again, putting myself in the situation. If I was the citizen, and then I get a letter from the government of, here's what you did. Whether it's the IRS saying, you did this, people want government out of their lives, and if there's a mistake, it's one of those things that, if it was Munis, source a faulty computer program, I mean, it's human error, it's human error. I can understand that. But if it's, um, if I, in my other course of business, sell somebody a faulty product, and the product, they want their money back, or it's faulty, I give them their money back, and then I go back to the manufacturer, and then I go deal with the manufacturer on, on what's wrong with it. And, and the same thing with, uh, I've had issues before where I've double billed somebody, or people have been underbilled with different things, or we've had situations before where, I even had one thing in a raffle where two winners had the same raffle ticket. It was faulty raffle ticket that had the same number on each ticket, and I gave away two prizes, because I said, that's the customer. I err on the side of the customer, I could have said, well, let's match it up, see which tar was the exact same that matches this ticket. It's just not good business that way. When you're government, I think people look for any type of break they get. They don't expect their government's going to fail them, and then they're going to be put in a situation needlessly. I'm not saying we waive a bill, I'm not saying we, we discount it dramatically. I'm saying, there should be something for the efforts, because this guy's had to make multiple trips to the sanitary engineers, to us, phone calls, lawyer consultations. I mean, we're getting to that point now where it's like, hey, you're the customer, we screwed up. Let's, let's give you a soft landing on this and then not make the mistake again. And let's be fair with it, as being fair, we made a mistake, and you owe everything, and we'll give you a year to pay it back instead of you pay us tomorrow. Or it's fair, you know, we shave 10% off your bill, we're sorry, we'll eat it on this, we'll deal with this manufacturer and not buy that monitor again, or that meter again. Or we'll make sure that the meter is calibrated more correctly next time.
And we can certainly ask that, if you'd like to.
This isn't Gary's fault, it's not his fault. This is a product fault.
All right, yeah, Commissioner, it, it's not the fault of the meter either. The, the meter worked perfectly. It was a, it was a fault of the Munis software billing system. The, 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 the meter is not at fault at all.
Okay, then it's a glitch in the, in the system of a system that we paid for.
Yes.
That we probably paid big money for, as, as a county.
Yes.
There should be some type of a service agreement with Munis, or the sales rep that sold us that product. If there's a glitch, they should back their product up somehow, a little better than, oh, yeah, we had a glitch, you screwed a customer, we're sorry. That's all I'm saying. So, let, I mean, let, let's just entertain negotiations somewhat to, to, I don't want to see this end up in court.
Well, I, I would first caution that we advise our prosecutors to what we want to do.
Let me announce who you are.
Yeah. The, uh, uh, remember the situation, um, didn't we have something similar before, where we had, we had a
Coach, who's it's happened?
The, well, we've had, we've had situations with past prosecutor's opinions speak to, speak to this. And I would like to, at this point, request a prosecutor's opinion, um.
We have it, we got it, we just presented that.
It says probably that we have to.
It says, I believe that sending a corrective bill to a customer and enforcement of the corrective billing is the proper course of action, and that's from Attorney Danzo.
Yes, we've always done it, that, we've always done that. To not do that could open the county up to not just liability from this man, but to other, every other customer who refused to, who would refuse to give the same break due. They'd have a, they'd have a cause of action against the county. And to be consistent with policies and with how things are done, that's the right course of action, even if it was a mistake. And this has happened before, and that prosecutor, the prosecutor's opinions are consistent. And we don't want to create a situation where we end up exposed. That's my opinion. I agree with Commissioner Cantwell. Them are darker.
All right, well, then, Commissioner, what, what is my course of action here?
Well, i- if, if Commissioner Moy would like further questioning from the prosecutor as far as if there's any sort of way that that can legally ha, I don't think there is, because I don't think, when you're dealing in public utilities, we even have the authority to do that legally. But, um, I mean, i- if, if the water wasn't used or consumed, it would be one
Yeah, that would be a different
That would be a different story, but, but it was.
Let's give it a week, and then let, and let the, I'm sure the gentleman will be hearing this, and I'm sure Prosecutor's Office is hearing this. Just give it another week of due diligence, we got a, an opinion, but, um.
Again, I'd entertain anything further you want to ask, too.
Yeah, and, and I think you said, do one more week of expiration, then I, then I agree. Then if it's, it's two to one, then we, we send them the bill, then we send them the bill. But at this point, uh, I would ask that we give another week, and let me get two, two votes that we give another week.
I'll be happy to sign the opinion, or the request for opinion, rather.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We got some visitors here? Please, we're good here. Martha, we'll do your art by the end.
That's fine.
Okay, uh, we had, uh, entertained a, um, education seminar with, uh, CCAO. Yes.
And their electric and utility aggregate program. Uh, we are familiar with Buckeye, which we just ended the contract with them last week.
Yes.
And now we have NOPEC, is that what it is?
Yes.
Uh, another, another group that does aggregation, that would like to give us a presentation here today. So, a- as we, uh, since the whole world is watching.
Oh, goodie.
When you, when you talk, tell us who you are, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and talk to you. My name's Brenda Farro, and I am the membership director for NOPEC. Uh, my job is to come out and talk to communities about NOPEC and why we can benefit your community. Um, NOPEC is a council of governments. We are a nonprofit regional organization. We currently have 240 community members across the state and almost a million customers. We've been in business for almost 25 years. We're working on our 25th anniversary, getting ready to celebrate that. And we've been around as long as aggregation has been around in Ohio. Um, a lot of folks that I meet with think of NOPEC, and you might have seen commercials on TV about NOPEC, and think, oh, it's just the aggregation program. That's all you do, and we have an aggregation program, and we don't have anything that we need to change, so we don't need to go with NOPEC. NOPEC not only does an aggregation program provide a professional, well-run aggregation program for your citizens, but because we are run and are board, and it's comprised of elected officials like yourselves, they come to NOPEC with requests for things that will help their community, not just people that are in the aggregation, but people that are also outside the aggregation that can benefit from the programs that are, are provided by NOPEC. So, what I've done is I've brought Aaron. Aaron is in charge of our economic development, uh, at, at programs at NOPEC. And I'd like for him, because I think you know about your aggregation program. You've been doing it for a very long time. An opt-out program for gas and electric, we would provide the same thing. We would send all the mails to, all the mailings to your residents. We would process the opt-outs, do the enrollments, exactly as you have today. It would simply be with a different supplier. So, I think that doesn't need a lot of explanation. Uh, but what I do want to have you understand is all the benefits that NOPEC does bring to you as a county, as well as all your individual townships. Um, in the county already, Warren is a member. In fact, the Mayor of Warren is on our horse.
Yeah.
And Liberty Township is also a member of NOPEC.
Does Newton Falls a member as well?
Newton Falls is two for gas. They can't participate in electric because they're a muni. Um, and then to your south, oh, my God, as well, right, right. To your south, Mahoning County is a, a member on behalf of, of the more rural townships, uh, in their, in their county. And then, obviously, Ashdora and Fortage are also, uh, members of NOPEC as well. Those are on the county level for their, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron. I don't want to spend a lot of time in here on the ground for blush, but I want to turn that over to Aaron. He's got some great programs that I think you'll be very interested in.
Sure, um, would you like me to give the microphone or can you just project?
Please, please, because it's, we need it for recording purposes.
Certainly, absolutely, uh, yeah. I can do that, and, you know, I'm going to hang on to one. Thank you, sure. Yeah, all of this, I brought everything. Good morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Aaron Markholy. Uh, I'm the Director of Economic Development and Community Investment at NOPEC. Um, what Brenda or anybody else at NOPEC would tell you is that I, I kind of, uh, have the, the fun job. Uh, everyone that knows us kind of knows us as an aggregator, but really, I'm here, uh, to underscore that we're a council of governments first.
Yes.
Um, more importantly, almost, than, than the aggregation, in fact, yes, more importantly than the aggregation, being a council of governments, and what we're, uh, currently inviting, uh, and, and suggesting that municipalities, uh, look into is joining the council to be able to take advantage of these, uh, uh, great programs that we have for your community. There are some counties that join us, and they just joined for, uh, a gas aggregation, but they still maintain, uh, all of the enjoyment of all of the various other benefits. Uh, and then there are some that join for just electric. A, a lot of different municipalities join for both, and that's really when they get their, their citizens the, the most amount of, um, uh, protection from a pricing standpoint, a, as well as from, uh, the benefits that, that come from a lot of our other ancillary programs. Um, so the, the presentation that you have in front of you kind of starts with who we are and what we do. As Brenda mentioned, 240 communities across Ohio. We serve in 19 counties, uh, including all of the ones that she mentioned, uh, here in Trumbull, and the, the neighboring counties like Mahoning. Uh, and we also serve as a watchdog for consumers. Uh, we do intervene, uh, pretty regularly, which is, uh, not typically an action that a lot of other suppliers might take. If we feel that there's a utility that's, uh, uh, implementing a, a rate case that would increase things unnecessarily or unfairly, then we will intervene. And oftentimes, you'll see our, our legal work, and that benefits everyone, you know? I, I do want to underscore that as a council of governments, we are nonprofit. Uh, nobody's here on commission, you know, we, we don't, uh, uh, buy a new boat or something after landing a community. This, this is a very different type of circumstance when you actually join, join the group. So, serving as a watchdog for, for consumers as well as being energy educators. We spend an awful lot of time, uh, to be able to inform customers, residents, businesses, and a lot of small businesses especially, which is why I'm very excited to speak with you all today because of the proliferation of small businesses in Trumbull County, uh, about how they can reduce their energy burden, how they can finance more efficient steps. And we're not just talking about, you know, quote-unquote, green initiatives. We're talking about lowering people's energy bills. And that can be long-term financial planning, partnering with the Energy Loan Fund or the other Department of Development programs, brownfield programs. Um, I, I can tell you right now that in, in my office, we have at least a dozen different projects that we're participating in from a financial standpoint, uh, that's investments in energy efficiency. But they have brownfield money, and they have other counties participating, and other financial institutions, state and federal. And we have a really good mixture of experiences, uh, on our team to be able to get small businesses the kind of assistance that they would need to be able to, to do the best business that they can. So, one of the things that I'd like to point out is our financials. Our financials are second to none. Um, I'm not quite sure, uh, if the last broker was, was, uh, going to be somebody that would bring you their financials every year and say the Secretary of, of, uh, or, sorry, the Auditor of State has given us the Auditor's Award yet again. Uh, but that's the circumstances that, that are beside with NOPEC. It's, it's ridiculously transparent. I'm, we're probably going to get audited by the end of this sentence. You know, it happens a lot, and we get really good at it, and, uh, we, we have folks all the time. So, we are a government agency, uh, and, and we do really take a, a great deal of pride in the financial transparency. Uh, one of the things that a lot of communities enjoy is the grants. So, we have a couple of different grant programs, and let me tell you where the grant money comes from. So, a lot of people come to us and they say, oh, okay, you're going to give, uh, grant dollars. Why don't you just lower the bill? Well, it doesn't exactly work like that. We have, uh, hedging folks on staff, and we work with NextEra Energy to be able to get the absolute best price possible. Then, after we've achieved that, we go back and we beat them up and say, what is the management of all these customers worth to you? We go back and get more money on top of that to be able to pass through to the community. And that's based on the ratio of the people who are enrolled. So, these dollars, uh, certainly could be spent by the local municipality to be able to lower bills if they establish a program to do that. But more often than not, they're trying to use those dollars to be able to do things like change out their streetlights to LEDs, um, or at least do a study. So, just recently in Warren, over the last two years, uh, NOPEC has granted dollars, uh, uh, equalling, I think about $170,000 to be able to do a citywide streetlight, uh, uh, assessment and shopping and everything else. They've, they've really done a great job with it. They've identified over $300,000 in savings, which in, in the city of Warren is a big deal. That's a big number. Um, and that's just coming from the, uh, fixing and the, and making more efficient of their streetlights. And what we would, uh, like to do, should Trumbull County decide to join us, is to be able to use, uh, a, a lot of that same, same good energy to be able to bring the various townships together, to be able to pool their resources for public works, that would be able to ultimately lower the burden of energy in the bills and the OpEx that your citizens would otherwise have to pay. And that's usually the multiplier effect that a lot of the local municipalities find from the grant. And we did do the rough calculations from the last time that the numbers were public in our, in, in our hands, uh, which was 2013. So, across the 25, um, eligible townships, were this, were the county to join, it would be equivalent to estimate numbers roughly $314,000 a year, and that's if both utilities were enrolled. It's less if it was just electric and, or, or if it were just gas for the, uh, whole arrangement. And I understand that there's timing and contracts and everything, but thinking slightly long-term, that's kind of the order of magnitude for some of these grants. And in addition to that, and it's not on this, um, but there are direct grants that, given the rough size of the number of, of people, there are direct grants that are available, um, should the county sign up, to be able to have, uh, uh, administrative overhead covered. I, in this, I would estimate somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 or $60,000 to be able to provide for the county, to be able to do any administrative, uh, switching from, you know, one, one system or the other, your legal oversight, all of those things cost money. So, we want to make sure that if it is there, that those, those resources are there. Transitioning from one vendor to the other, the government should not Transitioning from one vendor to the other, the government should not be costly. So in addition to that, we have a few other programs. Our Do Not Knock program is very popular. I don't know how aggressive they are necessarily, where exactly you all live, but I know around me, I'm very grateful that my community enrolled in the Do Not Knock program. The energy suppliers, they will come and knock on the door. They will be pretty relentless, especially if you have people that are vulnerable communities, fixed income, you know, sometimes they knock on the door and they say, oh, show me your bill. I'll save you money. Well, what we do is we manage a registry on behalf of all of the communities that have joined NOPEC to be able to manage that. And it doesn't necessarily get rid of any nonprofits. The Girl Scouts selling cookies can still knock on the door, all of that is fine. But solicitors need to be on a registry. They need to get a permit to be able to do it if it's not one in place already. Very popular amongst the townships because, again, we're alleviating the administrative burden on their behalf. We have the systems in place to be able to do that. Our community event sponsorships are also very popular. So we have these sponsorships of anywhere from five hundred to two thousand dollars. This is generally an annually recurring thing. I love going to county fairs, love going to rodeos, love going to a lot of the local events. And usually we get a request from a township and we try to cut the check as soon as possible to make sure that those events keep going. I mean, the good community nourishment is a job worth doing. Our renewable energy credits are very interesting, especially for some groups of folks that really want to have green energy or know that it was purchased through some sort of renewable means. If that is important to the community, I do want to say that just like anything else, you have to look at supply chain. You know, I recently bought a car and I really wanted mine to be an American-made vehicle that was made by a union, you know. Like those were my actual table stakes. I knew about what the size was, but then narrowed down the field. As far as renewable energy credits go, you've got to make sure that the renewable energy credits that people buy, if they are going to buy into that, it's not greenwashing. And that's something that, you know, regardless of your political persuasions or whatever you want to think about sustainability or any of these initiatives, you've got to make sure that if you're going to pay the money, that it's real. And we have a very good offering from a price standpoint, but we have an even better offering and a story to tell, regardless of price, about where these RECs, the renewable energy credits, come from. Due to our partnership with NextEra Energy, they are the leading authority on the generation of these things. They are the largest generator of renewable energy in the world. Thirty-seven, some huge amount, gigawatts and megawatts? I'm not actually sure the term. But it's a huge amount of money or a huge amount of energy every year that they produce off of wind, solar, and they also have large natural gas in their fleet as well. And they're actively divesting from coal. That's something that if somebody purchases a rec because they're on a green product, they actually know that they're getting what they paid for. And again, it all kind of goes back to this sentiment of consumer protection. It's why you join a council. It's why you join the Better Business Bureau. It's why you join your chamber, because there's some authentic stamp of quality on the financial transparency and on the transparency of what you're buying if you're going to buy a renewable energy credit. In addition to that, we've set up an energy audit program and that's exclusively for small businesses. I'm very happy about this because we went to DC and we've got money and we brought it back to Ohio for small businesses exclusively. So anything that qualifies as a small business in the eyes of the SBA, we have up to twenty thousand dollars for those businesses to be able to conduct energy audits. And if you're unfamiliar with an energy audit, it's basically the first step of walking through a building with an engineer, first step required to be able to get financing, to be able to actually change things and make a building more energy efficient. We created a program as well so that people would be able to know where to go. People came to us and they said, oh, you guys have financing? That's great. What's my first step? We said, you need an energy audit. They said terrific. What is that? We'd explain what it is. They'd say, how expensive is it? We'd say, well, it's a little expensive. So here, we found money and we sold for that. And then people would say, well, where do I go? And what we created was this preferred partner network where we don't transact business with them, but we have an MOU where they have a master service agreement with us. And what they do is they have very, very high levels of response time. So they'll get back to you within two days. They'll deliver an on-the-ground, boots-on-the-ground appointment to be able to do the audit within three weeks. And then within forty-five days, they'll be able to get the report turned around. I'll tell you this, we do a lot of these for underwriting these various projects to be able to loan money. This is about twice as quick as your normal market rates energy audit. So we've tried to figure out solutions exclusively for the small businesses. Your small businesses should be running that restaurant. They should be running that stamping mill. They should be, you know, doing that thing. They shouldn't necessarily be tied up in this. We have two lending programs, our pace and our step program. Our lending programs are wonderful. We work with the county and we work with the local municipalities to be able to loan up to a million dollars to small businesses. And what's the catch? The catch is the upfront time that it takes. It can sometimes go more than a couple of weeks, which is what you typically get with like an SBA loan. But the PACE program goes up to a million dollars for energy efficiency improvements and then includes a whole lot of things. That's roofing, that's siding, that's insulation, that's electrical HVAC for a building. And it's considered off-book debt, which is a really, really serious advantage for most small businesses. And when I say that, I say that because the repayment mechanism is actually done through the county treasurer. So it's a special tax assessment that gets levied onto the property. We've done so much with the local municipalities to be able to educate them on this project or on this program. But unfortunately, a lot of PACE lenders, and we're one of twenty-two in the state, I think, we're one of the only ones that actually cater to small businesses. Most of them work on skyscrapers and stadiums and stuff like that. We specifically designed this program so that small businesses can take advantage of it. Our typical portfolio size is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I think our current average interest rate across all of our loans is about four and a half percent. And again, we're not making money on these, but the idea is to try to pass it along so that we can use these funds for the betterment of the local businesses that operate within your community. Nonprofits and city governments are also eligible for that program. So if there's a town hall that can't necessarily go into debt, well, this doesn't count. They'd be able to get that new roof and finance it over time because it's a tax assessment rather than incurring debt. We've seen a lot of small townships really enjoy that feature of it. We also have the step program, which is up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's another small cap lending program, ten years, five percent out the door. And that's, you know, I'd go dollars to donuts with pretty much any other offering out there. So long as it's energy efficiency, we really like to try to finance it, especially for small businesses. The last thing I'll leave you with is our NOPEC foundation. So a few years ago, we started a foundation. It's been very successful. We are just closing our second round. I actually spoke with some of the folks from the Action Network downstairs. They've been cutting about it as well. They're probably going to apply in the next round. These grants are not necessarily the biggest, but they are very meaningful. And this can leave the realm of energy a little bit. And it can get into things like social services, health and medical, environmental, a lot of safety stuff, health safety, firefighters, water rescue teams. So it's up to forty thousand dollars, but being a NOPEC community allows the nonprofits, the local municipalities and so forth to be able to come in and apply. Hopefully, we can do as much as we can. So this is kind of an overview of all of the various things and I appreciate everyone's patience while I kind of rip through it. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about this or the aggregation or some of the advocacy work that we do. We just really value the opportunity and audience here with the group. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes.
Yes.
When we had a presentation by another group, the County Commissioners Association, they told us that they had Ashdoula, Ford's and Mahoning County signed up with them. It was on their map of fifty-three counties that they cover. You just said you have them. Who has them?
Yes, we both do. What they have is they have two different programs. They have the aggregation program, which provides an aggregation program to the residents. They also have a municipal load program. So your building, this building here, any waste treatment plant, whatever facilities that you have that you pay utility bills for, they have a program for those. So that's what Ashdoula and all of them.
Which one are you signed up with?
We're the aggregation program. We're the aggregation program for the end-use customers. So if you wanted to participate with CCAO in one of the programs, you could put your buildings with them. We do have a preferred pricing program under NOPEC that it really gives you great pricing. There's no margin associated with that from our supplier. So you could compare that with the CCAO program and decide which ones you want for your building. But for an aggregation program, that's a separate thing altogether. So Mahoning uses them for their buildings, but they use us for the aggregation program.
How does being a council of government help whatever? I mean, obviously, I think you guys are one of the few that are a cog. How does that, how does that work? And would we have representation on the board as community members if we were to join?
Yes, across the board, yes. So why does it help? Scale. So the really wonderful thing about this particular council of governments is that we are statewide. There's no requirement to be contiguous, you know. Sort of like a lake to river or a team deal or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
We also have the ability under the Ohio Revised Code to do some special activities. For example, we can interface directly with the federal government in some different ways. And we found that to the advantage of members. As it relates to membership and representation, so Mayor Franklin's on our board. And then because we talked about Ashdoula, CCAO's treasurer, I think, is Casey Kowalski, Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes, yes.
And he's the new Ashdoula County representative on the NOPEC board as well. And there are two counties that are, or it might be more than that, but I know that there's at least two that are county members for NOPEC. And Summit County is one of them. And I mean Shapiro, although not a formal board member, also is. So there is representation. Doug Franklin, Mayor Franklin is the Trumbull County representative.
He's the county administrator out there. Would that be it in Summit? The, because they don't have a traditional.
She's the executive.
She's the executive.
The county executive, that's true.
County executive, I'm sorry. Used the wrong word, yeah.
Yeah, and then Mayor Molnar is actually the county representative. So the way our governance structure is set up is each county has one representative.
Okay.
We have nineteen seats on our board. And then in addition to that, we have committees and other things where we get a lot of information and we see counsel from a lot of the elected officials in our footprint.
Each community has a board member or a vote?
Yes, and each community has a vote at our general assembly. So that one's coming up in November. So all of these issues, there are board members, but then each community has a vote. And I would point out that it's an equal vote. You'll notice that the other element of the council of governments and the way that we're set up is the pricing is uniform. There are some other councils of government or even some other coalitions of kind of loosely organized folks that purchase energy. And it's, you know, one city has a really smoking hot price and then other cities are really kind of paying through the nose. And we don't think that's fair. You know, one city should not, or one community should not be subsidizing another city.
Right.
You know, so we have uniform pricing across the board and it's very competitive. It's not always the absolute most rock bottom, but once you look at the entire total cost of ownership of utilities, the various representation that you would have in Columbus and the fact that most of the time it is actually the competitive or, you know, first or second closest to that, consistency of it, the ability for us to purchase, I mean, it really is kind of a good deal once you consider that the council of government spans across all this territory. So you're absolutely right to question the structure. It's a little bit esoteric, but given the competitive market in Ohio and the fact that there's like a hundred and forty different retailers out there, this takes a lot of the guesswork out of it. And we like to think that, given the fact that we've been doing this for twenty-five years, it's kind of kept the market honest because, you know, we just kind of said, look, we're not going to bake in any, you know, we're not putting our name on a stadium. You know, we're not doing anything else that's creative with those dollars, you know. So, you know, in that way.
Right, really good.
So if there was interest in moving forward with NOPEC, there's a couple of things that have to happen. And this will have to happen no matter totally what you do. But you would need to join the council of government, so that's a legislative process that you'd have to go through and adopt the bylaws, as well as adopting the NOPEC Plan of Operation and Governance. And that would take public hearings, which no one ever comes to. But you have to be statutorily.
I'd be surprised.
Really? I was in Massa last night and we just scheduled a public hearing for them and, you know, it'll be interesting. It's always interesting to see who comes to public hearings. But one of the other things that's really key is the engagement that our staff has with not only you, but with your population. So we've got, we've got folks that will go to senior centers. We've got folks that will go to pools, a bike that people can pedal on just to see how much energy it takes to turn on a little light bulb. Because really, the cheapest kilowatt hour MCF is the ones you don't use. So if we can teach people how to use less at their home, that is really more impactful than the aggregation program. So we're very, very serious about our education effort. And as we go through the opt-out, there's a lot of handholding. We're there for your staff, who will get phone calls, there's no doubt. I also want to tell you one thing. You have a great price right now. You're at four point eight nine, I believe, if I didn't look at it. Great price. That's a legacy price that goes back four years. No matter what you decide, no matter who you go with, the price is going to go up. You're going to be in the six, four, seven range. And that's not just with us, that's with everybody. So you've enjoyed that wonderful rate for the last four years and that's been great. But having someone, having a partner like NOPEC who can get that message across to your residents, because they're going to get a new opt-out, it's going to be higher. And you want to be able to have an explanation for that. And not to say, well, we went with a new organization and look what happened to our price and a lot of fingers get pointed. So we are working currently with all of our communities to help them understand what's coming. Because we just had a capacity auction, which is, I'm not going to get in the weeds on all that, but it's an auction that's going to affect ten or eight, six dates, I think it is. Our prices are going up. Has nothing to do with any of us, anything that we did, our prices are going up. And being able to communicate that to your residents is going to be really, really important. We want to partner with you in helping you to do that.
And on that note, I do want to mention that we have a call center that our supplier makes available too. There's three hundred people. They speak like seventeen or eighteen different common languages in the region. We have twenty-four seven. And it comes time to communicate.
Plus they're in the Midwest, so they speak like us.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
Something wrong with that?
Yeah, they're in Michigan, mostly, Summit, Ohio.
Oh.
I know, I know. I didn't want you to say this is going to work.
Well, we're not.
Any other questions?
Not at this time, no. It's a lot of information to digest though. I appreciate your time and appreciate you guys coming out.
Thank you.
And Lou is with you as well?
Lou is with us as well.
Lou Barodren, who I've known, has done, you know, different things with the county in the past?
Yeah, thank you very much for this opportunity and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My contact information is in the literature.
Yes.
Any questions, please, by all means, feel free to holler. We love talking especially about small businesses.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Lot to chew on, we'll be in touch soon.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If you want to go, Paul. I should have let you go earlier. I forgot we drove separate.
I won't be here.
Madame Yoder.
So Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Before I move into the ARPA proper, I do have a couple of notes that I wanted to share with you that with regard to the nine-one-one electric, I just wanted to kind of give you an update. Deputy Auditor Hannider and I spoke with Mr. Wilson from First Energy Engineering yesterday. And while Mr. Hannifer returns to the office next week, he's going to coordinate a meeting with Casey and Bechtel and Mr. Wilson from Engineering out at nine-one-one so that they can assess and kind of give us our options. So that's where we're at at that. And he will update you as needed when I am out of the office on that, if there's anything to update. Also, with regard to the electric for the Marx Tower, just so you know, Mr. Wilson is also the person that we've been dealing with there. So he's dealing with the same individuals. We have a bit of a working relationship already. And he's working with him and also moving forward on the things with the Marx Tower and the electric that's needed. And again, I'm guessing that he will at some point give you an update as to where we're at. He's out of the office until next Wednesday and he will be there next Wednesday or the following week for sure, give you an update. The, with regard to the ARPA funds being utilized for the hospital situation, where I'm at right now is trying to actually connect Attorney Faris from the group and Attorney Rogers, our outside counsel. They've also made that offer of someone from OBM and kind of, I'm trying to connect those because really Attorney Danzo was sort of working on that. I just sort of knew, had that relationship with Attorney Rogers and have tried to facilitate it. I'm going to be out of the office from the sixteenth to the twenty-fifth, but I will be working remotely, so if I have to join in on that, I will. But we're trying to get all of them together and that's sort of where we're at with all of them. But we're trying to get all of them together, uh, and that's sort of where we're at with all of that. With regard to ARPA proper, eligible, ineligible and update, you should have all gotten, uh, all of the eligible, uh, ambulance requests that you sent over. Bloomfield Eagle Joint Fire District, Howland Township Fire, Dunnington Township Fire. All of those are ambulances. Uh, do you want me to have Attorney Rogers prepare the resolutions for those four? And, uh, resolutions and agreements for those four and have them on the agenda next week?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Uh, also, just to help me out, because sometimes I make assumptions that you have contacted people and you haven't, and sometimes you contact people and I try to contact them. Has any one of those been, any one of those four been contacted as to that?
Not for me.
All right, I will take care of contacting, so that they know and letting them know that it will be on the agenda next week.
Do we have, in regards to those, is Bloomfield still helping Bristol, trying to redo their ambulance?
Well, uh, Bristol's has been turned in, I, it's on your sheet. There was some, I believe, some communication between them. I don't think that, um, Mr. Peterson wrote it for them, so. All right, that's, I think that, you know, obviously that's their choice. I also was in communication and they had all of the requests that had been, um, that had been granted. They have copies of those so they could see what, and I had already done that. I'd done that before any of them. So they, before Mr. Peterson got involved. So, um, they have everything. I, you know, I actually sent that, I believe, twice, because I'd given it to them and then they asked for it again, so I gave it to them. With regard to ineligible, Gus Davis Township had cemetery survey that was found ineligible, you've got that opinion. Uh, we had talked before about my sharing the opinions with Julie Green from Planning, uh, because of the frozen money. So I, that impacted the amount of frozen money, so I did share that with Julie. And then she felt that there was potential for it to be, actually be eligible because of the, uh, the new LMI. So she's actually working with Attorney Rogers on this. So I've left it on your sheets as pending. Uh, it's still in the, in the yellow. The other ones that are still pending are, um, the Kyler Foundation, the Culver Land, uh, Lake Dam, Lake Dam Study, Family Community Services, which is scope, and that's, um, defibrillators. Howland Township, which is the, um, uh, the food bank. And Community Family Outreach, which was, they had money before that was towards part of a request that was found ineligible. And so they redid it towards something else. With regard to Vernon Township, that was mentioned earlier and I apologize for misunderstanding. I was trying to write my notes for some of this other stuff during that and I didn't, it wasn't one that I put on there. Uh, but as you know, they're working with the county engineer for our ARPA project. In addition to that, they're working with county engineer on a separate project to be paid for by the Township ARPA Fund. So because Attorney Rogers, um, represents the township in this case, and because she also represents us, she requires a waiver letter similar to what was signed before. And she sent that to you, you should all, you should all have it, all of that, all of you should, and along with the email, so you can review it. But if it's okay with you, so that I will go ahead and get it on the agenda next week so that you can move forward. As I said, I'll be out of the office September sixteenth through September twenty-fifth, but I will be.
Should we, I'm sorry, how did you, should we be contacting Christie while you're out? Or can we still get ahold of you or?
I, I'm working remotely, but I think honestly, if you have an ARPA thing, I will say Christie on that. Um, and any, right, anything else is him as my deputy.
Yes.
And to be chief deputy.
Thank you.
Um, but for anything ARPA, anything financial, Christie.
We, we will have the four fire departments on for next week though, so.
But I'll have all of that done, yes. All of that will be on there. I will, I will handle all those resolutions. I did sort of let Attorney Rogers know to kind of be ready. And if, again, I am able to, I'm unfortunately having to work remotely for other reasons as well. But also to try to get these things moving. So if I don't get, for some reason, don't get the resolutions, they'll be completed and ready for you by, before the, the meeting. So we'll need four please, well, eight, because there's two separate free trials. Out of the office, working remotely, if you have, um, if I have anything, like if I have any questions, like I do now, where I'm asking you guys what you want, I will either have Christie or Deputy Haniford addressing those in the workshop with you next week. Uh, next week and the following week, because I'll miss you. You're given a yes sheet and there's the bottom line spreadsheet, spreadsheet. And again, if there's anything that I need to communicate to you, I will have Christie or Tim deal with it. That's it.
Okay, uh, I have one call that came in to me I wanted to address if we could. It's for a very small amount, uh, but Vianna Summer Concert, they, they do concerts in the Township Park in Vianna. They were funded every year by the trustees. Because of trustee situation this year, they were unable to get any funding for their outdoor concert series. They've been able, able to scramble money throughout the community. But the area has a couple of, uh, trees that are falling down, safety factor wise, where they have the seating. And they wanted to remove the trees at the Township gazebo area and then replant new trees for the future because it is an area where they need shade for the people that attend the outdoor events, the outdoor concert series. Uh, Roseanne Kennedy's the one that called me. They're not affiliated with the Township, they're their own, uh, Vianna Summer Concert LLC nonprofit. And she's asking if there's any way we can help them out with five thousand dollars to help remove the trees and plant new ones there so they can enjoy their concert series for years to come without any, uh, interruption. They do it every weekend in the summer and it's something that, um, and it's that by no fault of their own, uh, it is an activity that gets people outside, it is an activity that gets people together and in a community atmosphere. I think it probably would qualify under ARPA from what I've heard about it. But it's a minimal five thousand dollars for this. But I'd like to ask if she can, I know it's a lot of work for five grand, but if we can allow her to submit something in the portal for this.
Well, it, we're, they're submitting, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, they're submitting them directly to my email.
Correct.
We're not doing the portal. But yes, that's, I'm, I'm fine with moving whatever you guys want. I can do that if she sends it, um, and then, uh.
I, I told her we'd go to the maybe list with all the others. I explained that and then we, we need to address whether we're going to get to any or.
Right, right.
You know, some or all, um, at a later date. But with something as minimal as this, uh, that makes as big of an impact as.
I, I will say, that makes a big impact out there, those concert series are huge for that community, yes.
Well, and, and there's.
And I know other areas have, have lots of, that's one, the first thing to get cut when budget cuts hit.
Yeah.
And we get a lot of feedback from people that are upset that they don't have that and it, um, you know, anything that's outdoors, getting people outdoors is, is going to be a good thing with COVID money.
Sure.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I did neglect it, just so that you know what's to, on, uh, Attorney Rogers desk. I did, I listed the pending and that's all in, or, or big yellow on your sheet. In addition to that, because of this unique situation with those nine-one-one requests, those are also on her desk. So just so you know how much is on her desk right now. And I will be back for the, I will be back in the office for the October first meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so everything that's on the S has already been submitted to her?
No, not, that's not quite correct.
Which ones are that?
All right, so we have, you have, if you look, everything that's in blue, those are ones that we are kind of working on with frozen money. So if you, on the, on the first page, starting with Hubbard Township. Hubbard Township and Gus Davis Township, Julie Green is working on trying to find ways to make the generator requests that they have, um, they have for, um, that they had that were denied because of the LMI. So we, we're working on those. There's, those are not in front of, um, Attorney Rogers right now, so we're still working on this.
Okay.
Farmington Township, Mesopotamia Township and Bezetta Township are all three working with the county engineer on their road projects. Those are things that will be handled in a different way, just like Vernon was. So what, they'll, what they're working on right now, and they're all at different stages of this, is, uh, they will go back and forth with Attorney Toast and Attorney Rogers to come up with the agreement that you will have to approve. We want to get those agreements done as soon as possible because those agreements function as obligating those funds. So those are sort of, I, sort of with Attorney Rogers, I mean, they're eligible in this way, but they're, we're still working those, those details out. Going to the end of the list, Kinsman has money that was frozen, the culvert replacement has not gone before her. The other thing that I put there because, only because we have, it, it's frozen, uh, and I, you know, I don't know that we have it kind of ironed out yet. I, if we get to it, if you get to where you want to submit it, this is also the generator. We talked about that last week, where we separated out, they had, had a request that was submitted. They pulled that back for the frozen funds. They pulled that back because the culvert is more, uh, important and more of a priority. It was, there was enough money or almost enough and you, you both agreed that it was okay to do that for the generator. That's one that is not really submitted or resubmitted yet, Julie's working on that. Then below that on here, and again, the only reason they're like that, we can address that when we get to this, to submitting more, but is Bristol's ambulance request.
Yeah.
So not, I mean, it's, it's a little more complicated than everything's been addressed. Some of these have been looked at and now they're being re-looked at. So it's a little more complicated. I've tried to simplify as much as I could, but when we have a lot of stuff going back and forth, it's hard.
Hope Bristol's ready to go to the attorney?
Yes.
Can I submit that to the attorney?
I can, if you would like me to do that, that's fine.
They've, they've tried every project under the book.
Yeah, they know, and we just, we approved seven embassies, but not them.
I understand, and I will be glad to submit, I will be glad to submit that today to her.
Okay, thank you so much, and that's, uh, why you get the awards.
Many more to come.
That's great, the beginning. Do we have, uh, anything else for the Go to the County?
Don't think so.
Yeah, Alice, we have, uh, Honor, uh, meeting with you next. We're gonna meet and then I'm gonna meet at, uh, one o'clock with Sheriff Sparkle with you all.
You should be able to do it very quickly, yeah, thank you.
Great, thanks for coming.
So motion, should we, motion of adjournment?
You have anything to say?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know you. I know the meeting's getting late, I have a few things I want to hit on, but, uh, just for today, because the meeting is getting late, Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident, I think it was last week that you guys brought up the security here in the building. I, I, I heard the back and forth and I, I strongly think it's a bad idea to reduce the security in this building. Security and the police presence that's here now should be a minimal. Where I do agree with you, and I have for a lot, again, I haven't been to meetings in a while, so I haven't been to address quite a few things you've been talking about, is I don't think anybody coming here should lose anything. If they're coming here and they're pressed for time, or they physically have a hard time getting back to their car, they shouldn't lose their belongings. I absolutely don't agree with that at all, whatever measures need to be taken, so people aren't losing their prized possession. But as far as the security, I mean, it's, it's not a good, it's 2024. Crazy things are happening in the world every day. And we have a commissioner who's exiting the building at the end of this year, who was on camera in front of people, destroyed town property. I mean, you've got to take everything into consideration here. I don't think lighting the security is a good option. Uh, that's a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm going to hear that motion. Motion adjourned, second.
Mr. Councilor Mayta?
Yes.
Ms. Malloy?
Yes.